All right, everybody. If you want the opportunity to speak and you haven't filled out a speaker request form, please do. Hand it to Ruth in the back corner over there. All right, with that, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the DeKalb City Council's special meeting of December 2nd, 2021. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Eight present?
Thank you. All right, and I'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance, and Alderman Perkins, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, Approval of the Agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Awesome, the agenda is approved. Moving on to Agenda Item D, Public Participation. We have a few speakers tonight. First, Ryan, go ahead. And just a reminder, everyone has three minutes for public participation, so please keep your comments within the three-minute period.
All right, well, I was just intimidated earlier by Matthew Rose before this meeting. What I have to say is, Bill Nicholas, you guys proving anything that he recommends, and you guys look into what I'm saying, he shouldn't be in this position. And the concern I have is that if you read this proposal from this development, they're talking about live feeds with 24-hour surveillance with the police. There's trust issues with the police, I'm telling this right now. And you guys have nothing in there about rent control, because this is, I believe, a clever way to get a redevelopment of these properties. And what happens to the residents? They should have a hearing on this. You guys just can't rubber stamp this. We, I don't have enough time to speak on this, and I don't have enough time to speak on what I've been reporting, but it can be verified what happened to my mother was not false. And Bill Nicholas is referring to a county investigation. I need access to what he's referring to, because I can establish what happened to my mother wasn't false. I just talked to Caroline Morris before this, she's had information about this. She's seen the false police reports against me that night of December 26th. She has that. This, you guys all have that. This is a situation where this, this, if this goes through without hearing the residents of Hunter Properties, because you guys are effectively the landlords of Hunter Properties after what you did. And this is a situation where you guys are now saying you bit off more than you could chew. This is more than mismanagement. This is a situation where everything that I'm saying needs to be investigated. You cannot go off of Bill Nicholas anymore. This is a situation where he needs to be investigated, and that means being removed for the time he should be investigated. I don't need to be intimidated anymore. I don't need to be, I should have this addressed. And I don't know how much three minutes is, but if you vote for this tonight, this is part of this misconduct that's continuing, and it's spiraling out of control. There's no checks and balances on you guys, and everything that I'm saying can be verified. This has destroyed my family, this has hurt my two disabled brothers, and if anything happens to my brother, this, because this is definitely affecting them, that we're no longer a support system for him. Because all you have to do is look into what I'm saying. You guys are going to be held accountable, all of you, including the Chief of Police, because I'm still being told I can't get a police report. They're telling me to go to the sheriff, and the sheriff's telling me to go to the city police. And Matthew Rose is playing a game, saying that he already sent me something. I need the results of that county investigation. You guys vote for this, it is tantamount to further misconduct. I don't care if the owner of SunDog IT is a racist. It matters that he's a mayor that's covering up wrongdoing for the Bill Nicholas, the city manager. That goes for all of you. This is a matter, if you guys rubber stamp this, that's what it is. And I'm done talking right now. I'm very concerned about my family and my safety, and you guys are just treating this like it's a non-issue. I was just told by Emily Faulkner today-
That's your three minutes. Thank you. All right, Mr. Charvat. Again, just a reminder, you have three minutes.
I follow the rules, so. Want to bring up this $1 million expenditure here this evening. Now, I know there's probably going to be very little debate on this issue, because everybody's going to the Christmas tree lighting, so I hope you guys actually engage in some good quality questions and ask some questions that the public wants to know answers to, one of which that I have, a million dollars. So, the SSA generates what? That we're going to use $100,000 a year. We're taking a million dollars out of our reserves, so the extra $900,000 goes bye-bye. What is that going to do to the City of DeKalb bond rating? Are we not concerned about that? You're just grabbing a million dollars and handing it to a developer. My question is, why does this have to be approved tonight? Why aren't we waiting till the next regular upcoming city council meeting? I find it kind of fishy that we're kind of push this through under the rug, so the public barely even had notice about this. So, a million dollars coming out of our reserves, so what's our reserves? $4 million? So now we're down to $3 million. So that's a quarter of our reserves are being used for this. This is fiscally irresponsible. This particular company, I'm sure they're going to probably do a good job, they could do a good job on their own. I think it's a wise thing as far as dealing with this situation with the Hunter Properties. However, why are we handing out another million dollars? That's taxpayer dollars that could be used for police, could be used for fires, it could be used for the many potholes in our subdivision, Mr. Perkins. The other issue is, it's SSA money. We have an SSA in our neighborhood, Mr. Perkins, you're my alderman, and right now we're using, and I still don't have an answer to this question, $500 is being expended, the other $500 is being put into the general fund. Shouldn't that $500 be kept? I, I see you nodding the other way, Ms. Larson. That $500 is being spent on city expenditures, not in SSA number three. I would like an answer to that question. When money is designated for an SSA, it's supposed to go to projects within the SSA for the benefit of those who reside or are part of the SSA. So we're throwing $500. Your neighbors, Mr. Perkins, are throwing $500 back to the city. You're taking from our pockets here. So we need to be responsible when it comes to SSA expenditures. And I'd like answers to those questions regarding the fiscal impacts of this million dollars that we're taking out of the reserves. That is very poor. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Mr. Carlson.
My background is, I'm Robert W. Carlson, I live in DeKalb. And for 42 years, I did real estate appraisal work within DeKalb and Sycamore and Northern Illinois. Two years ago, I retired my business, and I'm no longer licensed as a real estate appraiser, but now we own 302 apartment units plus an office building that has 13 units. You know, I'm going all the way back to the time when Greek Row was, as everybody knew, it was Greek Row. And then as time went by, the change in the neighborhood was dramatic, and we've all seen it. I had to do appraisals back in the old days, and then also more recently. And my opinion, based on all these years of experience, and certainly a significant amount of money invested in the multifamily in DeKalb, that we have to do something that's very prudent. And this proposal that's being voted on tonight is, in my opinion, a very prudent decision on the part of the city council, that, that things have to be done with regards to a certain type of, or a certain investor in, in real estate in DeKalb. And if we can change it to a good quality, prudent investor, as this certainly sounds like, then I think it should be made. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. All right, moving on to Agenda Item E, Resolutions. Number one, Resolution 2021-103, approving a development agreement between the City of DeKalb and Clear Investment Group LLC. Can I have a motion to bring this before the floor?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And the principal in Clear Investment, Amy Rubenstein, is trying to dial in. Amy, are you there?
I'm here.
Good, good, good. Welcome. Amy is in transit, she's in an airport, I believe, and so she's doing this through her phone. Is that correct?
I mean, I got to a location, I'm sitting here. Can you see, can you guys see me?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can. Can everybody see? Okay. Amy, I'm going to present some background, and then I'll yield to you, and then the council will have possibly some questions to ask. Thank you for joining us. So, as I briefly recounted in my background for tonight's meeting, the reason we're here is because, as some of the speakers have already said, that there is an incentive that is being proposed to help Clear Investment Group, which is a Chicago-based real estate firm specializing in acquisition, renovation, and maintenance of larger affordable apartment buildings, to purchase a number of Hunter Properties, including Hunter Ridgebrook, which is 184 units, Hunter Triffrat, which has 40 units, Lincoln Tower, which has 66 units, and a total of about 403 units. And so there's another 100-plus that are in some smaller Hunter Properties on the northwest side. The sole owner of Clear Investment is Amy Rubenstein. She is also a principal in Windy City RE. Both are located in the City of Chicago. The total investment that Clear Investment intends to make in Hunter Ridgebrook, which has been the focus, because that's what we, I proposed dedicating the city incentive to, is a little bit over $13 million, of which $3 million would be dedicated toward renovation and upgrades. So if approved, this, the agreement that you've had attached to your packet that's been online for others to review, would extend the million dollars to, from our general revenues to assist in the acquisition and the renovation of Hunter Ridgebrook. And Hunter Ridgebrook, as you know, is three different standalone buildings. The addresses we've heard in this, this room a number of times, 808 Ridge, 832 Ridge, and 835 Edgebrook. The 184 residential units in these three buildings, which have some parking lots and surrounding yard areas, have accounted for a disproportionately high percentage of police, fire, and building and code responses every month since their purchase, and they have been purchased at different times. I will walk you through some numbers, because I understand, and I appreciate, that people want to know, how do we monetize our support in the way that we have? And so I intend to take a little time to do that tonight, if you will indulge me. And I've given you some reference material that I pulled together just this afternoon, and it will be popped online for others to see at their pleasure. So first, just a couple of quick notes on the proposed agreement. There, in exchange for the financial incentive, the company, Clear Investment Group, is expected to provide a number of security measures. In fact, it's quite detailed, and I've detailed it on Page 2 of your background. Fills a page, I'm not going to read all of it, but these are security measures that have not been extant on this property for many years. In addition, no trespass agreement, which is not something that we have with other property, larger property owners, but it serves and supports the security measures that are being proposed, and I'm happy to answer any questions about that, if you'd like. So, where does the incentive come from? What city funds would be used for this? I've suggested that we use the general fund reserve. This is within your purview to do. As you know, the reserve policy that's in your budget that we just reviewed, and which will be up before you on December 13th for approval, has in the back of the agenda, or excuse me, of the budget, a lot of different financial policies. And one of those is our reserve policy for the general fund, which requires a reserve of 25% of the value of the proposed expenditures for the proposed fiscal year. Where are we now? Well, we're four times better happily than Mr. Charvat thought. At the end of this year, I projected, and of course we have one more month in the fiscal year, it could be up a little or down a little, I suspect it actually will be up a little, is $16,611,650. The incentive, and that's 44.79% of the proposed expenditures in our FY '22 budget. When I started on January 1st, 2019, we were at 18%. But we've, we've been prudent in trying to manage that reserve and our spending generally. With the spending of a million, we would have $15,611,650. That would constitute 42% of our expenditures. So that, just for the record. One other thing, there is a reference in the incentive agreement to our special service area, because it exists, that will continue to be under the control of the council, was established, as you know, in the fall of 2020. We have had some conversation with Ms. Rubenstein about this, you know, what is it, how it come to be, and so forth. We never were in a position to expect collaboration from the, from the current owner of Hunter Properties as to maybe the best use for that, in helping with, in this case, it's external upgrades, it's not designed for internal, for a variety of reasons that we've been through here a number of times, state statutory limitations and such. But there's much to do outside, and I trust that we will have a collaboration in using that money, which is, by the way, the, whoever is owning that, those three buildings and those three parcels, that's their tax money. It's not from the neighborhood, it's not from other things, and there is one other property in there, which is 912 Edgebrook, which is a city property. As you know, we were thinking, well, maybe there'd be some money here to be used for a pocket park, and that's true, but that, that land which we own doesn't generate any property tax. So it's those three buildings, the beginning and the end of it, that's the special service area 30. And so we're very pleased that she was willing to leave that in there. Could have been a negotiating point, could have said, hey, it's costly enough, and then here's another $100,000 possibly. She was generous in that respect. So, before I get to recommendation, let's talk about how Nicholas came up with the million dollars. And at your seats tonight, I have in sequence, you've probably gone through it already and put them on, but there is some background on Amy Rubenstein, you can read at your leisure. You have probably gone online and seen this very document, but I recommend it to you if you have not. And then, if you're interested in when the three principal properties were purchased by Hunter Properties, a little quick and dirty Excel spreadsheet here to show you a little bit of history, when these properties were purchased by Hunter Properties, the original investment, the EAV, the most recent one of record through the county records, and then what Hunter Properties was asking for them on the basis of an attorney who had been working with them at the time toward the end of 2019. So those, those numbers are there just to give you some idea. The three, together at the time, in the opinion of Hunter Properties, were valued at over $21.5 million. So, why should we even be interested in this place? Why shouldn't we just let the private marketplace take care of itself? Let's, let's dig it in a little bit on that. You've got some line graphs. This one is particularly illustrative, and I think useful. This is not dumbed up, this is a way of representing, Amy, if you can see, I don't know if you can see. The very steep spike in calls to the Hunter Ridgebrook properties upon their purchase by Hunter Properties. This has been a document that's been referenced in a number of our hearings over the last couple of years, particularly building and code hearings, having to do with, with what's noted here. It's yellow means quality of life, which, which would be a wide range of building and code violations that weren't being addressed by the current management. So that's just where we were, that was a snapshot when I started, I wanted to see where we were. I hear about this Hunter property, where are we, what is this? So I got one of these for every one of their properties. But this is the one that is most apropos tonight. Okay? What's been going on since? Well, I didn't have time to do line, line graphs for all of them, but I did talk to the police department today and the records division. Thank you, Chief, for the opportunity to do that. And so I've got a breakdown here for both Lincoln Towers, Hunter Ridgebrook, and Hunter Triffrat. And this is for January 1, 2019, to today. So, if, if we were doing 20 questions, and you didn't have something like this, and I said, how many total police, just police calls have there been? These are not wrong numbers, false alarms and so forth, just police calls to Hunter Ridgebrook in that two-year, 11-month period. Let's call it 10,000, it's 9,929, and that doesn't include, generally speaking, if police are there, that they're calling it in and so forth, it's not a drive-by or self-initiated thing. 10,000 calls. The next one is a little busier and harder on the eyes, but this gives you a window to what our building and code department have been dealing with. And not only is the chief police here tonight, but Don Harper, who's our chief building official, is also in the audience tonight to answer any questions you may have. This is just one quarter, the most recent quarter that ended at the end of September, so July, August, September. There are 196 different, now this is after we had the settlement. You recall the settlement that gave rise to the option to be able to purchase at an agreed price Hunter Hillcrest, which, by the way, the city did do on October 18th, and we paid directly to Hunter Properties $1,185,000. There's a variety of things here, I won't detain us with going into the detail, but you see. Okay, so, the million. And I haven't talked about the fire calls, and the arson problems that we've had, and the, you know, fire also responds to when, when there are injuries, obviously, and so forth. By the way, there have been seven murders since I started here on January 1st, 2019, six of them right here, in and around these three properties. And the one that wasn't is tied back to Hunter Ridgebrook by the investigation. Bad actors connected, okay? So, a million dollars, 10,000 into a million is $100, right? Whenever our officers arrive, and they go in twos now, for good reason, what does that cost? It costs more than $100, especially since they're not coming, turning around, and going out. They're doing something, right? Even 15 minutes for a couple, and then the sergeant gets involved, and then the rec, da-da-da-da, interviews, so forth. I, I think, what it boils down to, what I'm presenting to you tonight is, the million dollars is, as economists or, and financial experts are so, so inclined to, to refer to what they call the opportunity cost, which is basically money spent for thing, for time lost, or for steps that could have been taken, and then there's a cost involved in that, or, or steps that were taken, and we'd rather that they weren't. So when you size all that up, and we just look at the police responses, we've got a million dollars' worth of pain that we're counting on not having. And a big, a big piece of that is the security measures that have been agreed to in principle in this agreement that's before you tonight. That is essential to the peace of that neighborhood. One final thought. So this neighborhood is in one of three zones that the police divide the town into. Back in the day, 25 years ago, there were four, right down First Street in the tracks, right? Alderman Smith, you can, you can help with that if you'd like. And then over time, as there were more issues on the northwest side, some of the land was, was sort of combined, so everything south of the tracks is Zone 3. Everything east of First and Lincoln, or north of the tracks, and east of, of First Street is Zone 3, or, excuse me, 2, and Zone 1 is the northwest side. Because of Hunter, and just in the last two years, we now have a Zone 1 West and a Zone 1 East. And east of Annie Glidden is the dividing line, and why is that? Hunter Ridgebrook. That's where the calls go. There are others, we know that, but that's principally the, the location. Million dollars for 10,000 calls. I, I, as, as your chief operating officer, cannot recommend that we walk away from this. This is an opportunity, now, to put this in a positive perspective. Ms. Rubenstein and her company, and, and we trust the new company, which is specifically designed to take on this, this large task, is making a big investment in solving some of our local problems, obviously, but her, her intentions are to make things better for, she's in the business of making things better for people who would like to live a normal life, have, have a home they could go to in an apartment that's safe and clean, that's well-managed. They pay their rent, in exchange for that, they get the amenities which they expect. Those have not been available at this location for a long time. And I focused on Hunter Ridgebrook because we know it so well. Don Harper knows, she's Don's stand-up, she knows every wall in that building, and so do some of our police officers. This, this is the best opportunity we have seen in a long time with existing property in our community. We, we are proud of the, the way most of our, nearly all of our local real estate managers run their businesses. We have so many audience tonight who may want to speak to this later on. They take the contract seriously. In exchange, again, for the rent, there's expectations about safe and secure and clean. And that's all we're, that's all we ask for in this, and the, but the investment is so significant, we wanted to, to close a gap, which we feel, had we not, would resolve possibly in this deal not happening. So, that's, I'll leave it there, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but maybe, Amy, you would like to add a few things, possibly?
Yeah, absolutely. This is a property that we wouldn't be able- This is a property that we wouldn't be able to get done what we need to get done without this extra million dollars. In fact, we'd simply just walk away from it. There's a lot that needs to happen here, and most of it is with the security. We're not trying to, I know someone had mentioned before that we're, you know, coming in to redevelop. And by redevelop, what we actually are trying to do is, just like you just heard, we are trying to create a safe and clean home for people to live in. That's it. It's that simple. We want to create a safe and clean space. And to accomplish that, it takes a lot of dollars to go in. So the $3 million that's dedicated is just for Ridgebrook. We also are putting money into the other properties that we're purchasing there. But those dollars are going to go in to clean up the common areas, to get the building back under control security-wise. And that's the biggest one that we're discussing here today. But we have to have cooperation from the tenants that live there and from the community. And that's where we started this conversation with the city. We're not looking to displace any tenants that live there if they buy into the same story that we buy into, which is two things. You want to live in a safe space, and you want to live in a clean and sanitary space. If you buy into those two things, and you're willing to pay your rent, which is the existing rent that is there right now, we're not coming in to jack up everybody's rent. So if you're willing to pay rent and follow those rules, then we want you there as a tenant. That's it. If you don't believe that this should be a safe, clean space, or you're not going to pay the rent that's going to help operate that building, those are the people that are going to be displaced. And it's as simple as that. We want to cooperate with the police. And it's not, when we had this conversation with the city, it wasn't, it doesn't take any convincing for us to say, "Yeah, we're going to put up cameras that the police are going to be able to access." We want that, because we want the help. The police know more and understand more about this particular building and about DeKalb in general than we do today. So we want that extra support and help, and we want to work as a team with the city to create this. The city doesn't want overspill of crime from this property. We want to have a statement that DeKalb is not the place for crime. These properties are not the place for crime, nor is DeKalb at all, and that it's not going to be something that's tolerated or accepted. It's that simple.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. All right, counsel. Questions? Who wants to kick it off? Comments? Alderwoman Morris?
This is really exciting. I had some questions initially as I looked at the packet. You know, I went through it all, every single page, every single word. And, you know, my initial concerns were just parts of ignorance of my understanding of the special service area and things like that. But I fully support this. I am thrilled to see this happen. You know, I had some other ideas about other things that we could add on to this package. However, the logistics of this agreement, because this is primarily a private purchase, we are just, you know, 4% of that purchase, as I understand it, a very small portion of that purchase. It's not a reasonable ask to ask for additional things. So I am thrilled to see this offer, and I'm looking forward to supporting it.
And I'm always happy to hear ideas later down the road, too. I want this community to be a beautiful, safe community in general. So anyone that has those suggestions, we are excited to hear them.
First, I would say, Ms. Rubenstein, thank you for your consideration in investing in DeKalb. Representing Ward 6, that is Lincoln Tower, as it relates to this question. And I have a number of things, but I'll start here. At Lincoln Tower in particular, the original building was constructed as a college student room housing unit with minimal parking. And over the last number of years, we've had challenges where, again, with 66 units and the number of people there with vehicles, the parking has been insufficient. So nearby businesses have been faced with the challenge of those residents parking in their businesses' parking lots. I'm not sure if this has even been on your radar yet for Lincoln Tower, but my ask would be, if it is, what did you have in mind, or what have been your other successes with controlling parking where the physical number of places just aren't enough for the number of units on the property?
So it's an interesting question, because when I was there the other day, a lot of the parking lot right now is taken up with garbage and dumpsters, and the parking lot was pretty empty when I was there. So first of all, I would say we have to maximize the spaces that we do have, which seem to me to be sufficient. I know that we're leasing some spaces from the railroad company, and we're, you know, I have yet to see that there was an issue. I believe you, because you're telling me that there's an issue with parking. We didn't see it in our analysis of this. So I think that part of it is being very straightforward with tenants when they come to us and rent spaces from us, and us saying, "Here are the number of spaces that you can actually have," and to be aware of that, to make sure that it's a good fit for, that it's, that this building itself is a good fit for somebody that might have more cars than spaces that they're allotted. So it might be a communication issue to make sure that we're finding the right tenants where we can meet their need. I don't know if that helps you at all.
Perhaps. So then, if this were to arise, if you were to take ownership, then would we refer those business owners to you to help remediate this issue, rather than the position that they don't want to be in, which is to confront the person that's parking there that shouldn't be?
So, again, I think there's little that we can do if someone that we don't know is parking in someone else's parking lot and we don't know about it. So I think that what we can do on our end is just make sure that we're properly screening as far as how many tenants are living in the unit, making sure that, you know, there's really not enough parking for working adults with cars to be in one unit. That's probably not a good fit at that building for them to be there. I, again, I think it's about making sure that we're letting the right number of people into the building and that we're setting the right expectations up front.
Thank you. Alderman McAdams?
So, like so many people in our community, I'm tired of being against things. I want to look forward to being for something, and this gives us something to be for. The negativity around our Hunter Ridgebrook issue has been emotionally draining and addicting, and all it's done is hinder our ability to improve our situation. So the return on our investment in economic development will be exponential, in terms of our quality of life, in terms of our ability to attract additional outside investment, and in terms of sustaining a new reputation as a powerful exurb in the region. I'm inspired when I see that our investments before have brought forth more diverse investments, like Ms. Rubenstein, to help us keep housing affordable here. I'm hoping we can point to this day as the day that DeKalb changed, and we can say the Annie Glidden North era is over. I'm glad to vote yes for a bright future where things work out not only for the highest good, but for the highest good for everybody.
Counsel, additional comments? Alderman Smith?
A lot, I guess. I'm going to go back to what the city manager said about crime and some history. And Ms. Rubenstein, I'll also conclude you from my prior days. Years ago, the police department, when there was a crime spike there, provided security for that property, and the crime diminished drastically. I think her proposal is excellent. I mean, if she involves our, you know, police and fire departments, it'll drastically reduce the need for service. If you add the numbers, if, just take, let's just go with the homicides, for example. I think the number of, the average number of man-hours on a single homicide is over 500, and I think the two chiefs can probably agree with me. If we do the simple math of removing those numbers of hours spent by our men in these situations, this is money that's saved for the city. If anybody thinks that these numbers are going to decline in 2022 without any action is in the wrong city and in the wrong place. These numbers are going to increase. I will guarantee it. It's in writing. It's there. It's the proof in the pudding, if you will. Fire department, how much hours we spent and money we spent for the guys to fight an arson fire out there? I know they were on, I mean, if, I suppose we could tax our public service agencies to come up with a dollar figure, it's going to exceed $1 million in a heartbeat. The other thing is, I received a couple of calls. I do know a couple of people live there. They are concerned. They want a better place to live, and I think this is what, these people deserve it. I'm sorry. This is ridiculous. People deserve it. I'm not going to go on a high horse anymore. The proof is here, right here in the pudding, if you will. Again, I'm for this. I think it's time to put this problem behind us and let Ms. Rubenstein and her company take hold and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Alderman Verbit, another question?
Sure. I was just going to let everybody in. Go ahead.
From a standpoint of the graph, thank you very much, Mr. Nicklaus, for this. It helps. Are we sure, though, that we just won't be moving these same challenges to another location? In other words, it's a combination of factors that lead to this, including the condition of the properties and lots of other factors. But, again, these are residents, and they need a place to call home. So is this simply being moved to another location versus removed is what I'm interested in. To Alderman Smith's point of improving this data, absolutely, we all want to improve this data. But I'm not sure that Ms. Rubenstein's purchase of these properties will help solve those issues alone. We've got a lot more that goes into that beyond just this consideration.
It's an excellent question. It was the heart of a very lively conversation early this morning that the mayor and I had with some of our top owners and managers of rental property. And that was thrown out, just, you know, "How will you address this?" And as I looked around the room this morning, I said, "Well, this isn't just a city issue. It never has been. It's a community issue." And the people that we were talking to this morning, some of whom are in the audience tonight, can speak for themselves if they'd like, frankly, we've relied on for many years to be a bulwark against the kind of things that we've seen in this current ownership of Ridgebrook and the other properties we've been discussing tonight. I'm being diplomatic. And why is that? Because they are operating with essentially the same ethic, and quid pro quo. Here's a safe, clean, secure place that's, by the way, on a bus route and is near the campus, and you can jump on this and get to places if you don't have vehicles and so forth. And in exchange for that, there's a rent to be paid, and we hope you'll pay it every month. And as long as that happens, we are going to get along famously. And we can look at other things as time goes along. But, so that was the discussion, and the answer remains the same. Mike, I think it's about the professionalism of the management firm, and we have really good management firms that are operating. This would bring in another outstanding management firm that is, and Amy, Ms. Rubenstein said it very, very well, that that's, you have to be able to communicate, and you have to be able to communicate what the basic terms of the agreement are that is otherwise known as lease. And we've seen what has happened and what a transformation has occurred when good management has taken over. Gideon Apartments, classic example, it was only 10 years, 15 years ago, that that was like Hunter Ridgebrook. A lot of police calls, a lot of activity that we won't even discuss here. And overnight, once, and it was renovated and fixed up and cleaned up, and security in the building, and not to mention the technology that was available there, and live feeds to our police department. Great working relationship with them. University Village, which was always said in despair, like 10, just 10 years ago, five years ago, has been transformed. Doesn't mean we don't have calls, and it doesn't mean that we will never have another call to Hunter Ridgebrook. People have domestic disputes in all neighborhoods in our community. So those things will happen, but having a speed dial, basically, to our telecommunicators is not what we're looking for.
And I would look to chief for more data, but in fairness, this crime data does not necessarily reflect our residents' behavior.
Correct.
It is a lot of non-resident behavior as well, and I don't have that information in front of me, but I think just to point at the properties and the residents themselves isn't as fair as to truly look at who is causing the crime and where are they from.
So I can speak on that to the point that you're right. It doesn't all, these numbers do not, you know, show what the actual, you know, the owners of those apartment buildings are doing, but it does breed a transient crime problem because of the lack of security at those buildings, the lack of lighting, the lack of surveillance at those buildings. It breeds criminal activity. So you will see, you know, criminal elements coming from outside the area of the city of DeKalb, and they feed on that type of circumstances, that type of venue. They'll feed on that, because they know they can hide in the shadows. It's very dangerous for police officers as well to go into a, especially at 1:00 a.m. in a low-lit area or not, or area without any lighting at all, and try to engage a subject who actually does not live in the building, doesn't have a DeKalb address. So it's hard to track those, you know, those type of, you know, I call them clear and present dangers, because they are presenting a clear and present danger to the city of DeKalb. And I think that the change in the management is one of the most important pieces of this, because now you will have that surveillance capability, you will have better lighting, you have a more controlled structure. Accountability to the company is huge. If you can look at any landlord in this city that works with the police department, we have different circumstances and different results, because they are working hand-to-hand with us. To have a management company that will not work with law enforcement and help us make this a safer place is really the root problem here. But you are right, there are great citizens who live in these areas and live in these homes and live in these apartments. But the problem is, that area feeds, I mean, it is a feeding ground for that, for the type of situations we've been dealing with every day. And not to get too into the weeds, but, you know, just recently, we had U.S. Marshals here looking for a subject wanted for murder at one of these addresses. So that's exactly what I mean by how this is feeding this type of clear and present danger to the city of DeKalb. Why is that subject, why does he think that he can hide in the shadows here? And that's something that we have to start addressing, and I think this is a great step. So, but you're right, sir, we, there's some, you know, we can get deeper and maybe find out a little bit more who actually is committing crimes, but I will tell you that you will find that most of them do not have a DeKalb address.
Thank you, chief.
Alderman Perkins?
What protections are going to be put in place for the rental, for the rents of the residents to ensure that we're still, that the market-based rent is still charged? to ensure that we're still, that the market-based rent is still charged?
Are you asking me that question, or is that for me?
Yes, Ms. Rubenstein.
Yeah, because I didn't see anything, and, you know, the fact is, it is governmental money. So, what are we doing to protect the residents to ensure that a fair market-based rent is charged? And continues to be charged for a period of time?
Yeah, well, we don't have plans to start increasing existing tenants' rents. And I think as we rehab, so, our philosophy when we come into a building and we take over, because what we usually do is we usually take over a building and improve the quality of it. That's, we buy distressed assets, that's what we do. So, we're not going to, we're not going to try to get people out in order to make that happen. We have enough on our hands to take care of with the units that are vacant right now. Those units will be rented at market rent. Market rent, what we think of as market rent isn't that high above what the current rents there are. The market can only bear so much, so we're not going to go above that, because we would have a vacant building. We're talking about, you know, we could have a unit that's $100 difference between what the current tenant is paying and what the next tenant who comes in will be paying. But somehow, it rents for new units that are newly rehabbed have to go up from what the existing tenants are paying in order to be able to continually provide for a building that's properly being taken care of. We hope that all of our tenants that are there will want to stay and pay their rent and cooperate with the plan. I don't know that that's going to be the case. I think that the way that the current building has been, I think that some of the people that are causing these crimes have been living in the building, not paying any rent, for quite some time. I don't know exactly why that is, but, I mean, part of it is, you know, we've had eviction moratoriums in the state for a while. But there are, there are people there right now that maybe shouldn't be there, that are causing some of the problem. And I think that once we establish who actually wants to stay and live in the same community with the vision that we have, those people are not going to find it cost prohibitive to stay.
I guess that's said a little differently, is there a willingness to index to, I need any market-based index? Because what I'm hearing is, is you guys determine the market, right?
The market determines the market. I mean, the market's going to be determined by what tenants are willing to pay. We're not shipping people in from other counties to pay the highest rents. I mean, the market of DeKalb will determine that. If our neighbors are charging $800 for their unit that's comparable size to our unit, we can't come in and charge $1,200, I mean, no one's going to pay it. It's not going to happen. We're going to charge what the market is willing to pay, which is really, again, it's not that far off from what is supposed to be being paid right now. The issue is, most of the tenants aren't paying right now. So, for various reasons, I'm not blaming that all on the tenant. There's reasons that people aren't paying. I mean, there's not security in the building right now. And the building looks like it is, it looks bad. It looks like crime is acceptable in that building, that's what it looks like. The tenants don't have access to the laundry rooms. The tenants don't have, don't have secure spaces. It's, you know, like the gentleman spoke before, that the tenants don't have a, there's not enough lighting there, there's not enough trash pickup, there's not cleaning that's going on. It's begging for crime right now. And it needs, that's what needs to be turned around. You know, we hope that everybody wants to cooperate. Again, like, our plan is to sit down with each tenant, to knock on each and every door, and say, here's our plan, it's pretty simple, are you on board or not? And if you're not on board, we're simply going to say, it's time to go find somewhere else. I think that, I think that oftentimes, when status quo is accepted, it breeds, negativity breeds off of itself. And when people see that no one is taking pride in their, in this immediate community, then they're not going to take pride in it either. And that's what causes, you know, that's like the beginning of the crime. And when people see that that's not the way that we want this to be, and that's not the way that's going to be perfected here, I'm hoping that a lot of the troublemakers will settle down. There's, of course, going to be bad guys that don't, and they're the ones that are going to have to leave. But you don't want them in your community anyway. We're not trying to get out the good guys. We want them to stay, we want them to stay and pay their rent.
Other questions, counsel?
I do have a matter of, will you be accepting voucher holders? Rental voucher holders?
Section eight?
Can that be a part of the agreement?
No, I, here's the issue with why, someone asked, why is this so fast? Why is this happening so fast? As if it was like some secret from the city. And I want to comment on that, because this comes back to what you're asking right now. The reason that this is moving so fast is because we have a seller on one side, and a buyer on another, and the city is a completely independent party here. So, the seller is saying, it's time now to make a choice and buy this property. We came back and said, we can't buy this property without the right finances to make sure that that happens. And in the negotiation between the seller and ourselves, we were only able to get so far. And then we had a gap in the middle. And the seller's saying, it's time now, and we've pushed off this deadline of giving a final answer, but there's, there is a hard deadline, and that was really what set this timeframe. It wasn't the city trying to pull a fast one and, you know, let it slip under the rug. It was, it was us saying, we don't have time to wait till the next meeting, because then our answer would have to be no to the seller. And that's simply why it came up like that. So, to now go back and make changes, something, putting in something like that is going to only, A, cause more changes to come about, so more trains have to be involved, and B, it's going to be a red flag to a lender, too. So, we always accept section eight in all of our buildings. That's not an issue. Every building I've ever operated has accepted section eight. We treat it the same way that we would any other tenant. We still run, we still run credit checks on them, we still run background checks, and it's treated the same way that any other tenant.
And all that sound, all that sound business, I agree with all that. But we do have some landlords in town who don't, who simply don't. And in this case, when the city's handing a million dollars over, I'd like some assurance that that's still going to be a practice, and it's going to resonate.
Yeah. We will cooperate with section eight. It will not be the only source of the tenants that are there. We will absolutely cooperate with them, we are happy to have section eight tenants.
Alderman Morris?
Aren't they legally liable, aren't they legally required? I see some heads nodding, I feel like there are people who probably know more about me, but, or more about this answer. But I think if you have over a certain number of properties, you are legally required, no? Okay.
No, properties bought and sold every day. This is not public housing, so there's not an obligation by statute to have a certain percentage or something like that, maybe that's what you're thinking about. The question has been asked, and I think it was answered. Would you consider, on the record, on the written record in front of a televised audience, it's been reported that that would be welcome?
I'm satisfied with it, I just was curious.
I have a speaker request form from Glenn Roby, you want to come up, Glenn? Glenn was part of the conversation this morning, which appreciate your time this morning as well, Glenn.
No problem, thank you, counsel and staff, and Ms. Rubenstein for being here today. There are a couple of things that were brought up, and I'd like to try to illuminate them to the best of my ability, and that is with respect to Alderman Verbeck's concern about displacement of people. Ms. Rubenstein, is it my understanding that you don't have a full building in all of these places? You're not fully occupied, is that is correct?
Right.
So, the displacement of people, that she has places for people to stay. So, there's not necessarily going to be a shuffling of people around the city of DeKalb if she's got occupancy or vacancies within her property. So, it's not that she's full, and then she takes out a few people, and they've got nowhere to go. So, I think, you know, I just kind of wanted to kind of put that perspective on it. And if there are tenants that are, based on what she's presented today, that are going to be requested to move on, that is because they're not meeting certain basic requirements, which I would think and hope that the citizens of the city of DeKalb would want everyone living here to meet those standards and not have people who don't want to pay rent, who want to cause crime, and want to create problems for the city residing still in the city after Ms. Rubenstein would move them along. I think we would say that that would probably be not in our general collective best interest. So, I wanted to touch on that point. When we look at, you know, moving forward and look at the dollars that are being requested by the city to support a deadline that the seller has put upon the buyer, you know, anything that we can do, in my opinion, again, I'm giving my opinion, not the opinion of anyone that I may be associated with, but my opinion is that we should do whatever we can to improve the quality of the city of DeKalb if it is reasonable and makes sense, and we can afford to do it. Sounds like these basic standards are being met with this proposal, that it is reasonable, the city has the opportunity to do it, we're going to impact a neighborhood that I think anyone that has been around here for more than 10 minutes knows, this is a problem, a real problem, and it is affecting commerce, it is affecting the quality of life, it is affecting people's desire to stay within the city, it is affecting the, our business partners in the community, our university's ability to make a change. Someone once said, you know, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. This is a change to try to get a different result. And so, to the extent that, you know, I can lean in and support this, I am. I, like Alderman Morris and others, had some questions this morning with the city manager and the mayor, and we kind of pushed those questions. And I don't know that we're ever going to create anything that's going to be utopia, because that is not reality. But I think to the extent that we can find common ground to work together to solve problems, and everyone's not going to be happy with every aspect of it, but if we can say that this is reasonable, makes sense, and is in the best interest of all parties concerned at its core, I think we move forward with this. And, you know, I don't think anyone is saying that we want to, you know, permanently displace people. To the question of section eight, section eight is a program that is controlled not by anyone in the municipality of the city of DeKalb. There are a certain number of vouchers that DeKalb County has. So, it's not an unlimited thing, you can't just show up and say, hey, it was in, there's controlled by the housing authority that says, these are the number of vouchers within the city, within the county of DeKalb. I believe the number's some, a little over 600, 630, something like that, that's it. So, if, you know, it's not like you can get 2,000 more vouchers in the city, in the county of DeKalb, to rent. So, I think it's being managed well, you know, and it's a program where the tenants that are coming in with the vouchers, they're screened, they're verified, they're confirmed. I mean, I don't think anybody, you know, if you choose to accept it, you're going to accept it. I would imagine that when she's, when Ms. Rubenstein said that, I will accept section eight. Why wouldn't she? You know, that's, those are extra protections for the types of tenants that she's trying to attract to the city of DeKalb. That is, what everyone says is those folks that may not be residents of DeKalb, have a DeKalb address, that are visiting, that are not paying rent, that are not being good citizens, that are causing a good, a fair amount of our problems within the city limits. So, I don't know that we can solve all society's problems through a business transaction, but if the business transaction makes sense and is reasonable, and we can all say that overall, there's something, there's more good than there is negative, and then let's do it. And I don't know that we need to spend personally a lot more time on managing her business.
Thank you, Mr. Roby. I'll let Glenn go a little bit longer, we had a long conversation this morning. No, no problem, we had a long conversation this morning with some other property owners that were subject matter experts, and I wanted you, no, you cannot, that I wanted to make sure that you heard what we were hearing from some of those subject matter experts in our community, and thought it was appropriate to let Glenn speak, so. All right.
I do have one more, one more question.
Well, can I ask, can I, Alderman Larson first?
Sure.
Okay, Alderman Larson.
I don't really have a question, I just, my thoughts on this is, oftentimes, we have, businesses have come to us and they want to expand, and they were asking for either a tax breaks or TIF, or all different ways that some of the civic funds can help them personally, which then also helps the city. And I think this is just another creative way of using civic dollars to make DeKalb better. And I don't think we have to get everything like in a perfect, you know, hole that it's like, it's got to fit this, or it doesn't, and we can't use it. So, I really applaud everybody that was part of this to come up with another way of working on a problem we've had in the city for a while, having a new landlord that seems to have fabulous management skills that will just be fabulous for that area. And so, I just, I'm just saying that, I totally support this.
Alderman Perkins.
So, to clarify, the scope of this million dollars is limited to Ridge. To this project right here, it has, even though the dialogue talks about all 400 units that are in negotiation, this won't have any impact at all on Lincoln Towers. There could be a request, a subsequent request from Lincoln Tower, and/or Triffrat, and/or whatever else as well, right?
That was two parts, so, the first part, correct. We chose the focus, and we thought it was legitimate for the reasons we discussed here tonight, that we all know. And Ms. Rubenstein agreed that that's certainly a worthy target for the city's assistance. And the other part is, no, this is, this is the package, this is what is offered. This is the beginning and the end of it, it's a million dollars, it's not a million plus a little more. And Ms. Rubenstein is shaking her head yes. That was never part of the negotiation, it wasn't, I'll come back to you, maybe in a couple of weeks, we'll see what we can do. None of that is in play here, so this is it, and I can say that emphatically.
So, there are ongoing negotiations with Lincoln Tower, then, is that correct, then?
Pardon?
Is there a linkage between this and the Lincoln Tower negotiations with Hunter? Or, once we do this, what's the likelihood that the other stuff just evaporates, then?
That's right, follow.
You're worried that if, that she would only purchase Ridge Brook and then not purchase the other properties which are discussed here?
Exactly, so what's?
Ms. Rubenstein, go ahead and respond.
So, we're under contract right now for the whole 403 unit. It's not, I actually won't purchase it if it's less than that. If we can't get enough volume, we can't operate it properly, because I can't staff it properly. So, I have to have a minimum volume, and this is about as small as we can, as we can go. So, we're talking about Ridge Brook as far as the, where the dollar is tagged to, but we're bringing in relatively proportionately equal funds into Lincoln Towers, Triffrat. Those properties also need this, and we are also putting security on those. Lincoln Tower, we have also cameras going up, similar, similar stuff there that we're seeing. So, our method for, our, our plan for all of the buildings and for all of these units is the same thing. It's that we... It's that we, we're going to create that safe environment in all of them, and we do, we are prepared to put those dollars in.
Good, thank you.
Alderman Favor.
So I, I will, I'll say, I'm just thinking about this in, you know, over the last several years, we've been working in the Antiglade North area for a long time, trying to make improvements with condemnation of the cinemas, taking down Edge Brook. Just recently, the city spent a million dollars plus purchasing another building, moving tenants that we're going to pay to have to demolish that building. All of these have come at a cost. And our, you know, longstanding court cases, you know, it takes a lot of time for the city to enact these changes. And here, you know, we have a new manager coming in and wanting, wanting to take, take over all four buildings right away, make changes all in one step for an investment that would be significantly less than if the city had to make it on our own. So I think it, you know, it's, again, I say this to everyone that wants to come into DeKalb and invest, you know, their hard-earned dollars, you know, thank you for doing that. And this is a step greater than the city could take in this short period of time, so I am for this, this decision. I think it's, again, it complements to everyone that's been working on this. I know it takes a lot of work, a lot of negotiation, but again, I, we were asked, every one of us last year, what can we do? How can we make improvements in Antiglade North? Why does it have to take so long? And here's our opportunity. Thank you.
Other comments? Last call?
All right, hearing none. Boy, everything that's been said, I'm not going to repute those things because I agree wholeheartedly with just about everything that counsel has commented on. You know, I remember in, what was it, 2020, going on a police ride-along. It was end of fall, early winter, and I went through every hallway, every floor of Ridge Brook, Triffrat, not Lincoln Tower because there was no way I was taking the elevator, but walked up a lot of those floors and went through those properties. And I saw, I saw squalor. I, I saw our people being forced to live in conditions that no one, no one, especially in the city of Kalb, should ever have to live in. What I saw in the hallways, what I saw in the stairwells, what I smelled, what I physically witnessed was absolutely appalling that we have let this go on for as long as we have. And that was a solidifying moment for me to know that the, putting my hat in the ring to run for mayor was, I wanted to help effect change. And anyone that listened to me on the campaign trail heard me talk about Hunter properties over and over again. And I remember the night, election night, I made a comment about addressing Hunter properties, and a room of over a hundred people cheered. And I was actually kind of surprised how many people knew that term, Hunter properties. But that is something so many of our residents are so clearly understanding that that is, these properties that we're talking about right now, seniorly, are making an impact as Mr. Robey commented, not just on the people that live there, but the entire community, Northern Illinois University, and the surrounding area. So for us to be able to bring in someone like Ms. Rubenstein and her team, and the first day I met her, it reminded me of working with the Mike Pittsleys, the Glenn Robeys, the Will Heinishes, professional, caring, considerate people in the team, and the words they spoke reminded me of the kind of people that we want to have in our community. And my confidence level was high then, and then each interaction with her and her team afterward, my confidence continued to rise. So I am extremely excited about this opportunity. I'm excited what it means for the people at these properties, I'm excited what it means to our police department that has to go there in the middle of the night, in the darkness, and respond to these calls. I'm excited to the students that live in Greek Row there and the apartments that surround, and to be able to come to school here in DeKalb, and this is going to help impact making it a safer place for them to come and go to school. But all those kids that attend the Kalb School District, when you think about, what is the life like for some of them living in these properties over the weekend, getting ready to go to school, coming home from school? And with this transaction, we can affect four hundred and six units and a ton of families that those kids now can live in a safe place in our community and have an experience that so many of us have. So I am, as I said, extremely excited about this. Ms. Rubenstein, I appreciate all the time your team has given us and the conversations that we've had. And with that, I would like to take a roll call to see if we can pass this resolution.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
A resounding yes.
Adye?
Resolution passes. Excellent work, counsel. Ms. Rubenstein, I wish you were here and I could shake your hand, but I look forward to the updates, and I look forward to working with you and your team. And especially, I know counsel and everyone in attendance tonight is looking forward to seeing the transformation that we have a high level of confidence is going to come with this transaction. So thank you very much. With that, I will take, I will, what's that? With that, I will take, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, same sign. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you so much.